Good evening. I'd like to call the March 11th, 2025 Planning Commission regular meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom, online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage, or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. Can you not hear me, Joanne?
Well, I thought it was louder than it was supposed to be, but it's okay.
Okay. I'd like to begin tonight with the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudene, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call roll?
Commissioner Hamm?
Present.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner Tagney?
Oh.
Oh, we got a dead mic. Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
And Vice Chair Simmons?
Here.
Can I take a quick break to try and address the...
Okay, and we are joined tonight by Community Development Director David Loia and Deputy Director Jennifer Dart. Okay, next on our agenda, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed in our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you're on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen, or by pressing the star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
The Climate Action Plan draft is out there now, and people are reviewing it. And the climate is still of major concern to us in a global and a local sense and anywhere in between. And as we know, it's not getting the attention from the people in power in Washington like we would like. So it's up to us to truly take charge of the climate issues when it comes to our local community. So I'm just looking into the future about what we're going to need to do when we're planning our community. And I'd really like to encourage us to really have a holistic view of what we're doing. I have the good fortune of being able to walk around town a lot and take the bus. I don't have a car anymore out of choice. And I'm able to see a lot of things that... It's not that my vision is the vision we should all have, but I do really think that when I am able to walk around town and see things, and how things are planned or unplanned, or connected or not connected, you know, it just, it really fills me with thoughts about how we could even improve things. So I'll try to be coming here more and more, but I just want to remind us that the climate action, "action" being the operative term, we're going to really need to focus on that pretty urgently, even before it actually comes to passing. So, you know, think about the climate, and think about the big picture and how things are connected, and a holistic view of things, not just projects and neighborhoods, or, you know, developments, how it all fits together. I just think we are going to need to do that now and for the future.
No one online? Okay, with that, I'll close early oral communications. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. We have one item on consent, which is to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes, regular meeting, February 25, 2025, by 30:00 PM. Would any commissioner like to pull that item, or do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve. It works now.
A whole second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, we have public hearings, but there are no public hearings tonight. And after that, we have two business items. The first business item is adopting, considering adopting Resolution PC 2502, recommending the city council accept the 2024 General Plan Annual Progress Report. Can we begin with a staff report, please?
Absolutely. So it's time again to review the city's accomplishments toward implementing our general plan as we prepare to submit our General Plan Annual Progress Report to the state. The report is required to be submitted to the state annually by April 1st, and it's a helpful tool for the city to communicate progress to the community as well. You'll see things a little bit differently in this report. The first section is our progress towards meeting the RENA numbers, which is our Regional Housing Needs Allocation numbers. And a couple of things that I wanted to point out in this section is that this year, we did not have any large multifamily projects, which we've had in the past, so you'll see that the overall number is lower. Nineteen of the 22 housing permits polled were actually accessory dwelling units, so we continue to do really well in accessory dwelling unit development. Arcata has permitted 83% of its total regional housing needs allocation, which is above where we should be at this point. So that's something that I'd like to point out. But with that being said, I just want to highlight something that I think, Matt, I think it was you that brought this up, that we should be viewing these numbers as a floor and not a ceiling, so looking towards exceeding those goals moving forward. The one area which we continue to lag in is the above moderate housing development, so that's something that we also need to consider as well. We don't have a lot of single-family development or development that would qualify based on what equal rents would be for that type of income levels. So that's one of the areas that we continue to kind of lag behind there. In Section 2, you're going to see a formatting change from last year. So obviously, we adopted the new General Plan 2045 this year. What we decided with this report is that it would be best to track all of the implementation measures in that general plan. So we created a spreadsheet. What you're seeing in the report are accomplishments towards that. You're not seeing every single implementation measure that's in every element, but if I expanded the spreadsheet for you, you would see that. So our tracking spreadsheet has every single one of those on it. And the goal with that is internally for us to maintain those kind of networking relationships with the different departments that are responsible, and just reminding, you know, maybe Environmental Services, or reminding our other departments, like, hey, these are the timelines that we set out. How are we doing towards accomplishing these goals? So it's really an internal tracking mechanism, but also something that's a great way for us to report out every year. These are the things that we actually did accomplish towards meeting those different implementation measures. In the past, what we've put together is pretty much anything that would fall within a policy or an implementation measure, and that got a little bit messy because most of everything we do falls within a policy. And so we felt like tracking the implementation measures was a better way to go there. But I'm open to feedback for either this round or additional rounds. It just seemed like a cleaner way to bring that to you every year. The other thing that would be helpful potentially is, as we get further into it, we can view each year, so we'll have them stacked. They'll be hidden for this report, but I could expand them. And that's something that we could bring back to you, so you can kind of see what did we do last year, and how are we working towards our goals for the next year. The biggest news this year, of course, is the adoption of the General Plan 2045, so I discussed that in the Section 3. And I just want to, again, thank all of the commissioners who were part of that process, because it was definitely a lengthy process, and I think that it's a great accomplishment for the city and for the Planning Commission. Once the city council adopts the General Plan APR, it is available on the city's website, so you'll see the last two years, I believe, are on there and will remain on there, and so you can kind of look at the progress that way. I'm hoping that this new implementation tool will be an easier way to track it from year to year, so that instead of having to go look at different formats every year, you're looking at the same thing. So hopefully, that makes it a little easier to read for everyone. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got about the report.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions? Yeah, Dan?
Yeah, briefly, do cities ever get in trouble for not having enough above moderate income housing developed?
Kind of, actually, we do. Do you recall, David, what the... There's a state law that we have to provide a certain amount. I can't think of what it is, unfortunately, but we have to provide a certain amount of overall, the mix. And so it does open us up a little bit if we're not developing that mix, but I'd have to come back to you with the exact information. I'm sorry, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Is city staff seeing this as an area of concern?
I would say that yes. We definitely want to develop housing for all affordability ranges. I would still, I would still say that affordable housing is probably what we're primarily missing overall. So while we're, while they put this in there as a mandate for us as far as what to develop, the mix that they, they put in, I think that affordable housing is still something that we're finding needed.
I would also add to that, just to remind the commission and the community that part of the concept behind the infill housing programs that we're doing, the gateway is a first, but we have other areas identified as infill opportunity zones that we can densify in these areas and start to produce the types of housing that this community needs. And that would come both in terms of higher-end, you know, condo-type housing, perhaps in these, you know, infill sites, but it'll also come in the shape of, you know, more moderate income affordable housing that is, you know, higher density. Right now, we have a large proportion of our single-family residential housing stock that is in the rental market, the vast majority of it. In fact, our ownership rates in Arcata are about low 30s, 30%, whereas, you know, the state as a whole is, you know, up closer to 50%. And so that just, that's an indicator. It's not, you know, the whole story, but it's an indicator. And you may recall that we talked about, you know, the sort of trajectory of our housing market post-war to current. Basically, what was happening was we were having many people age out of housing during the same time when Cal Poly, Hsu at the time, was attracting more students. And in particular, in the 80s and 90s, the parents who were sending their students here found that buying a home and then renting that to some of their students' friends was more economical than putting their student into a dorm. And so we had this transition to a lot of single-family housing stock going into the rental market. And so one way that we're going to address our ability to meet this need for, you know, for above moderate housing is to draw those renters back out of the single-family housing stock, move them into brand-new multifamily housing stock, and then free that single-family housing stock up for the private market to then, you know, start selling. If you no longer have an asset that's, you know, competitive in the market for the rental market, you may decide, you know, hey, I'm done with this asset. I need to sell it and cut my losses, right? So that was kind of the hypothesis that we're testing with all of this, you know, infill housing work that we're doing. So you get it on both sides. One, from a transition of existing single-family housing stock, and two, from the production of higher-end housing that's in, you know, either apartments or condos that people can buy.
Any other... Yeah?
David, what's the consequence if this continues to lag?
You know, I think, as Jen mentioned, we'll bring back specifics, but if you're not meeting your housing requirements in the various income categories, the state has triggers at 25%, 50%, and 75%, where there's a check-in, and if you haven't, during that timeframe, haven't met those floor requirements that are dictated in your RENA, then some of your jurisdiction's local authority is handed over to, you know, to developers to be able to develop, you know, based on, you know, what they see fit, as opposed to what you see fit. Now, I would also kind of couch that in the, you know, 200-plus bills that have been adopted, passed, and enacted over the last, say, three years related to housing that have eroded local control. I think the City of Arcata has really taken, you know, taken that directive from the state seriously and has attempted to stay out ahead of it, and make sure that we have, you know, retained the local control that the state allows us to retain, that we stayed ahead of trying to adopt, you know, objective design standards, for example, and continue to meet the community's need for housing, you know, based on, you know, our local actions. So yeah, there's some impact associated with, you know, with those state laws for not meeting RENA, but I think that they have largely been subsumed by other state housing laws that, you know, shift us away from a, you know, a subjective discretionary process to begin with.
Any other questions over here? Okay. Well, I think we should open it up for public comment, and then we can finish our discussion.
I'm a Gary, and again, I just think the vision of the future is something, as opposed to the same-old, same-old style of, you know, different housing for different folks. I've been looking at what's going up in McKinleville and the We Are Up community that Mary Keen is developing, and also the Life Plan Humboldt for the senior housing that was originally going to happen here in Arcata, and we lost out on that opportunity. But how we live, it's really interesting, because I've just met so many people who have students that went to school here, and the parents bought the houses, exactly what David Loia was saying, so that they could rent it out to a bunch of other students while they were going to school. And again, the state kind of sets these mandates, and it's, sometimes I just think we need to kind of get ahead of the state, because it's kind of an old-fashioned, stodgy way of looking at things, I think, you know, asking that we have a certain percentage of being such-and-such a kind of housing. What we need is, you know, appropriate housing for appropriate lifestyles. And I know this sounds, you know, kind of general terms, but I just do think we need to start kind of challenging the status quo about all this, you know, moderate income, affordable, low income, you know, those types of things. And we all just need to live together how we can, and looking at those little micro-communities and see how we can expand them, so that we're not creating kind of static neighborhoods of one type of housing for people.
Do we have any folks online? Okay. Who wants to start off the rest of the conversation? I can do it, but usually Scott lets everyone else go first, so I thought I'd try to emulate him. I thought it was a really well-written report. I think, you know, obviously, HCD requires us to do this, but I think probably its most important function is communicating to the city and the public, you know, what we're doing. And I'm always very impressed by all the work that the city's doing, and so having a place to talk about it is great.
Yeah, I agree. It's a pleasure to read over this and see what's happened and be reminded of the progress. Seems very clear, well-presented. Thank you.
Okay. Seems like no one has major concerns. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Does anyone want to make a motion to adopt this resolution?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution PC 2502.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And if, thank you, Jen. That was an excellent presentation. I'm going to give just a moment to transition, as she's going to go home to her family.
Thank you, Jen. Let me know when you're ready. Okay, our second item tonight is to provide direction on the Community Benefits Program. So actually, David and I had a conversation by phone earlier today. Because we have two members of the commission missing, we discussed potentially not making any sort of final decisions on which community benefits to keep and which to not keep, and what order to put them in, but rather to use this time tonight to sort of further clarify what all of these items mean, and exactly how they would be implemented. And then that way, hopefully, at a future meeting, we can really dive into a decision. Does that work for everyone else? Okay, great. So, David, I don't know if you have thoughts on how best to proceed?
Yeah, I think that's a good decision. I think we could spend the time just addressing any questions that came up for this group. That'd be beneficial for the Planning Commissioners who are not here. And then, you know, I do have the community benefits that we had discussed in the spreadsheet up on the screen, so the public can see whichever ones you're wanting to discuss. And I did want to just add two other things. One, excuse me, one thing I wanted to add was, I realized that something that got dropped in the conversation, and I meant to come back to it, and it's been so long, and I didn't have it populated in the table at your first meeting, was that we actually were awarded Department of Conservation Grant, the Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Grant Program, for the work that we did with this, the gateway in particular. And part of our application, what we had made the pitch to this group that is interested in conserving agricultural lands, why they should award us a contract to focus on infill development in a city in an urban environment, was because we said, really what this program is about is, you know, protecting ag lands by, you know, retaining new development inside the city's borders, and by, you know, developing on, you know, redevelopment-type sites, that that was in part going to protect the ag lands. But then we also said that, you know, part of this was going to be that we would create a framework for contributing to land trust conservation of the ag lands around the City of Arcata. The city's already adopted a green belt policy that identifies the areas around the city as important open space, and encourages, you know, conservation easements across those. And then, you know, with this SALT grant, we had found a way to operationalize that green belt policy. And so I'm strongly recommending that we include this, and we can refine the details, but include this SALT benefit, which is to contribute to a land trust, and that's for the purpose of a conservation easement in the green belt around Arcata. Having introduced that, I will also just briefly introduce the attachments, the other attachment, rather, that we included here, the meeting framework. The idea here was that we'll come up with a structured method for having a conversation around each of your different priorities. I don't think we need to do that today. Again, we should save that formal discussion for when the entire commission is here. But, you know, please read through this, and happy to answer questions about it today, but it might be more fruitful to have a discussion about what elements of this do we want to include in our discussions. The way that the Planning Commission made a lot of really good progress in its discussions around the General Plan update included, you know, providing sort of like these really concise arguments in advance of the meeting to share with the commission. What I would ask is that we do that in enough time so that I can get it into the packet, and that makes the administration of it a little simpler. And then everyone's able to see what everyone else has said. It's in the packet, and then you come prepared to have dialogues about that when you get to the meetings. So just wanted to call your attention to that and explain why that's in here, talk about the SALT addition that I'd like to recommend, and then I'd be happy to open it for commissioners from there.
Thanks, David. I see Peter has a question.
David, are you suggesting that we do that for homework for next time?
Yeah, I think you should read through the framework, and, you know, consider what elements of that framework might be helpful. You know, staff is going to make a recommendation by the time we get to that meeting. I think I'll have a more formalized recommendation. My intent behind this one was that we would, before we got into the meeting, I would make a pitch for, you know, how you could handle your conversations, given the homework that you had last time, to go and prioritize your, you know, top three to five. And so in your next staff report, you know, there'll be something that outlines what that structure might look like. And if you're familiar with what this framework, that's in Attachment B, is, and you look at that structure, I think you'll be ready to have a quick conversation about, how do we tweak this to make sure that it works for this group?
Are you saying that we should write our thoughts down on what we think is important and give it to you before the meeting, so you can pass it out?
I think that would be an efficient way of doing it as a potential option. And you can also just come to the meeting prepared to, you know, make your pitches. But if you want people to read in advance what your points are, get them to me well in advance of the meeting. We can talk about that timeframe, what that looks like, so that your comments will be in the packet ahead of the meeting.
Okay, before we dive in, I think it's appropriate to open it up for public comment. Joanne?
... complex I live in had to have an inspection done. And I live in a 24-unit complex and two stories, and there's parking spots allotted for every tenant in the parking place. And as I just said to you, I don't have a car, so I don't need a parking slot. But what I don't have for my tricycle or for my wagon that I wheel around in lieu of having a car, a safe place to keep it. And I had it behind my apartment, and I was told I couldn't keep it there for fire reasons or whatever. The insurance company just said I couldn't keep it there. So I'm, I can't fit it in my apartment for space reasons. And so as we look to the future, and hopefully, less car-focused future, we need to come up with... we need to come up with, you know, not only bike, safe bike lanes for people to go from point A to point B, but once they get to those points or from the point they're at to the point they're going to, safe, sane, reasonable places to put their vehicles that are not cars. And it's, you know, and I have a trike, and bikes come in all shapes and sizes now. So, you know, that cookie cutter, just bike rack like you see everywhere, it was even clogging up the sidewalk by outside the campus store in front of the newsstands there on Eighth Street. We really need to figure this out really well, really well, for housing, for people to not need a car, but have a safe place for their non-car vehicles that they're going to get around in.
Thanks. Anyone online? And I think I can respond briefly just that, in the general plan we adopted, it's one bike space per bedroom in all the new apartments. And so it's going to be, you know, if you have a two-bedroom apartment, you get two bike spaces, and they'll be enclosed and indoors, so it's not just a rack that would sit outside. So we were thinking of you, Joanne. Okay. So my suggestion is that we use this time to flag benefits that you had questions or sort of comments about, not sort of saying, "I don't like this one", but saying, "I don't know what this one means." Oh, yeah.
I'll go. I don't have a question about a specific one, but more of a question about how, when we're reviewing this, like, should we be concerned that if there's too many of these, that there are certain more important ones that won't be chosen? And so, and then you were like trying to deduce, like, is this one more important? Or this one, should it stay or should it go? And it's like comparing apples to oranges. And so when I was reviewing it, I was thinking of it as like, the fewer the better, to, you know, the invisible hand in a way. And so I don't know if this is a question or a comment, but did others feel the need to do that?
I've felt that way the whole time on this process. Like, there were, there's been many that have been eliminated that felt like they should just be part of building a building or providing a rental or, you know. And that if there's such a low bar that somebody can choose that instead of something that we all might think is a lot more important, you know, there's an opportunity missed.
Any other?
I think some are significantly more important than others.
So I haven't had this conversation with this group, but I think we're all about to disagree about which ones are which. But I, but I, but I agree with you, and I think that removing ones that we all feel, or most of us feel are not necessary is a good process that we should all go through.
I have a question about the 1.5%. I think that was discussed last meeting briefly. No, it appears several times. Was it an arbitrary choice? How was it made? Do, do we even want to have it there? You know, what we're trying to say is, we want that thing to happen by proving to us it happened by putting up this amount of money. But is that the right way to do it? And is it the right amount of money?
Can I just tack on a question to that? I think it's relevant. So assume that somebody chooses this benefit, it happens, they give, they pay the money, they put the money into the fund. Is it just to be used whenever the next project comes around? Or do we have like a stack of projects that are just waiting to happen, that those funds could be like used in real time? And if that's not the case, does the city have an issue with holding on to funds with nowhere to spend them yet? Like, is that like logistically difficult for the city?
Yeah, there's a couple of ways that it's used in here. To go back to address the 1.5%, is it arbitrary? It's a number that's been used in other jurisdictions. To my mind, yeah, it's pretty arbitrary. I think the idea here is that, you know, 1.5% of the total project costs for a large project is going to be a fairly significant sum of money to, you know, a smaller project, like, you know, construction costs towards installed public art, but it will be the minimus to the project itself. If you have a $50 million project and they're putting 1.5% towards public art, you're going to get a lot of public art, but it's not going to be much skin off the back of the $50 million project. So that's certainly something that could be discussed. They're done in two different ways. The one I just mentioned is an in-lie fund. And yeah, those in-lie funds do have use-it-or-lose-it kinds of requirements. So if we create these, we would have to make sure that there is a project pipeline. Unwinding money and trying to figure out who paid and, you know, needs their money back because we didn't use it in a specific time period, which those in-lie-type payments require would be a huge hassle. So we'd have to have a set of projects. Now, with public art, that's easy, relatively speaking. For something like, you know, affordable housing, which we chose not to recommend, an in-lie fund for affordable housing, that one's a little trickier because finding the spot to create a housing space isn't as easy as finding a spot for public art. And there's diminishing returns. The 1.5% in today's dollars is continually being eroded while you're waiting to find a spot where you can use that fund. So there are definitely use-specific nuances that you're going to want to dig into. With this other one, establish and maintain for a period of 30 years, a pro, I'm sorry. Well, yeah, that's a good, good one as well. So here's something where they're actually creating a project-based car share. I'm sorry, the 1.5% is paid into a fund. There's this other one where it's, okay, here we go. On-site open space with improvement costs equal to or exceeding 1.5%. You're actually getting something built day-of, and that's an actual impact, community benefit, impact on the community then and there. So there's, it's used in a couple of different ways in here, and I think that, you know, as you go through these, you need to think real carefully about these sort of nuances and how they will impact or not impact the community depending on the success of those programs.
Yeah, Peter.
Following up on that, I feel like having a cash donation to a fund for some purpose is not what I would be in favor of. I would like to see some actual benefit, tangible benefit come to the community, like the one you just quoted, David, where you get open space as a result instead of dollars in some bank account, which at some future date is going to have something happen. I, I think, I, all those funds that are, that are recommended, I would be against.
Okay, I think we're sort of slipping into for and against already, which I appreciate, Peter, but I think, and I think two weeks ago we had people sort of making the opposite argument, sort of saying that maybe it's easier to implement sort of just money into a fund. So let's, let's save that for when we're making decisions. And then we can use this time now more for clarifications, if that's okay, Peter. Any other clarification things?
Yeah, I have a handful of questions, and I don't need to ask them all in this one go. But I guess I'm, I'm curious about, you know, reading through the spreadsheet, there seem to be like several that could be combined into one. I wonder if the commission and staff are interested in something like that?
Can you give an example?
Sure. I, you know, I think we talked a little bit last time around the public art. There's two references to public art, one being native-driven public art and one just be public art. And I, you know, I think there's a really great opportunity here, this being the city of Arcata, to do something kind of special with these community benefits that is specific to this. So if we're talking public art, maybe the city is making a priority that it is native public art. This is not me attempting to modify this. I'm just kind of suggesting that there are, I'm seeing efficiencies possible. Another thing that kind of came up is there's some, like, some of these items are enumerated, but it doesn't totally make sense to me. So there's like a mix of unit sizes. I don't totally get the notes about it being the 20% unit count or threshold, so if that could be clarified. Another one would be like the 50 FTE jobs that are created. That's super hard to identify at the time of permitting, and I don't really know like how that is going to kind of like procedurally happen. So I'll stop there because there's stuff to answer, but I have more.
I'd love to hear from staff on both of those.
Yeah, I think yes to, you know, talking about ways to combine where we can find efficiencies. For the mix of unit sizes, I think that the idea here is that you wouldn't get credit for having a mix of different unit sizes if you just had one, you know, that was of a different size. Wanted to make sure it was, you know, a significant number of units that were in different-sized categories. Right now, in today's market, there's a real drive towards, you know, efficiency units or one-bedrooms. You know, this has always been sort of a goal of the city is to have larger rentable units that families could move into. And so that's kind of the idea behind that. The other, I'm sorry, which was the other? Oh, the FTEs. Yeah, I, you know, it would, it would need to be, you know, on a case-by-case basis, but the way I can see operationalizing that is if they came in and they said, "Look, I'm building a, you know, an office space with retail on the frontage and, you know, units above, and that's my project", and they could demonstrate that within that office space in retail, there's going to be at least 50 FTEs, even though they won't be the ones running those businesses. They're building them out for those business types, which I think is a reasonable, you know, approach. I think that right now we have so much vacant retail real estate that we're not going to see those kinds of projects probably for a while. But, but yeah, that was kind of the concept, I think.
So David, that the jobs are created by the space, they're not jobs that are created making the space?
Correct. Yeah, the idea is that you're creating a place of employment in Arcata in a mixed-use building, and that we would want to see that. That's the purpose of this, and so we would give you credit towards your community benefits if you did that large-scale with at least 50 employees, 50 FTEs. Full-time equivalents for, yeah, those who don't speak gibberish.
Yeah, and so, so this is another, it's not just, do we like it or not? But do we like the exact, like, is 50 the right number to put there? And if someone came in and said, "Hey, I'm creating 40 full-time employees", would we not want to give them credit, even though that's also a large-scale commercial place? And so I'm, I'm just trying to think about how to like operationalize and implement this sort of thing. Yeah.
Roughly speaking, 50 sounds ambitious.
It's a lot.
Yeah. So maybe we could talk about the, the number and just sort of be more realistic. Any other clarifications from anyone?
I had a few more.
Yeah, go for it.
One that says special needs housing 100%. What does that mean?
Yeah, I think that if 100% of the units were reserved for special needs individuals, then you would get credit for that community benefit.
If it, if it reaches that 100%?
Yeah.
I see. But only if it reaches the 100%?
Yeah.
And I'm also curious about the like exceeding wastewater discharges by 15%. That, again, seems really complicated, and I was wondering, does the city have plans or pathways towards the permitting of this, like pre-engineered systems to encourage something like that? I think that puts a lot on the designer to, like, like, I guess I'm saying, if this is a proposed community benefit by the city of Arcata, like, how do we like pave that pathway a little bit easier for a developer to say, like, "This is feasible for us", without putting all of the engineering on them?
Yeah, that's a good question that I'm going to have to consult with the engineering department on. What I can tell you is that there are many businesses that already do some kind of pre-treatment. And we, you know, as we were going through this process, we were simultaneously going through sort of like the, the process of looking at the wastewater treatment plant, and, you know, it's probable inevitable relocation because of sea level rise. And one of the ways that we address that potentially is through, you know, a dispersed system. And so I think this was sort of an aspirational community benefit. It's definitely doable in today's, you know, you know, world. Whether it's financially feasible, I couldn't tell you, and what the engineering looks like, I'd have to get some, some background on.
I don't think it would be that difficult to do. I mean, based on the specs of the specifications of the equipment that's being installed, I think you could get a pretty good idea of what the water savings would be or what the energy savings would be. So I, I think it's doable.
I don't know either way if it's doable or not. Did you have other questions, Ashen?
I think that's just my last comment was kind of, you know, I had questions about that, like the fund that we are referencing in several of these, and if there have been more thoughts by the city about like how that could be managed? Is that a city-run process? Is it community-run? Like, this kind of in-lie fee as a community benefit, how could, is there like a proposal beyond just like having this fund identified about some sort of community budgeting with this fee, which I think is really cool and radical, and I don't know about it yet? And it would be really awesome if it was here.
Yeah, just, just quickly, I think that's going to depend on the type of fee that it's for. So for example, with the art, if there were, you know, funds put into an art fund, you know, our, our local arts agency would probably largely manage how that money was dispersed. You know, we'd have some sort of oversight, I'm sure, but we don't have those programs specified yet for, for my add-on that I'm strongly recommending, contribute to a land trust, since that's what we said we would do with the SALT funds. That particular one, we would probably, you know, work with any land trust that's interested in working with us to, you know, create conservation easements. We would collect those funds and probably immediately turn those over to those land trusts to do that work and to start, you know, building those assets and using them as matching funds for their other sources, you know, getting into, you know, agreements with them about how much land would be conserved and that sort of thing. So we would, you know, depending on the nature of it, we would rely on partners. If it was something that was, you know, to contribute to assets that we largely manage, for example, open spaces, you know, and parks and that sort of thing, we would probably take those funds and manage them. So we'd have to set up the, the structures once this program is in place to, to manage those assets or those, yeah, those assets.
Yeah.
I had a question on a different topic. Did you want to tag on anybody on that last bit? Okay, sorry. I'm just looking at this and I'm noticing, so this was initially just supposed to be part of the Gateway Area Plan, but then we decided we're going to make it part of the general plan. And so there's like sections in here that talk about like the electric car share program located within the Gateway Area. Would we want that not to just be limited to the Gateway Area?
Yeah, we'd need to clean up.
And, and then, yeah, like the rehab and preservation of a historic or potentially historic building located within the Gateway Area. But we would want to open that up. Okay, so, all right.
Yes, I think we all are in agreement about that, right? Like, yeah, okay. Anything else?
So in other words, there will be no specific references in any of these to the Gateway?
Yeah, we, we left off this discussion before the decision to move the Community Benefits Program out of the Gateway into the general plan, so there's some legacy stuff going on here, and we'll, we'll address all that.
I have one to flag for you, David. One of them says remediation of toxic contamination above cost compensated by government programs, but doesn't state how much above, and that feels like a problem.
Yeah, I mean...
21 in my Excel sheet.
I, I definitely think the commission should think carefully about this one. I'm not real clear that... not real clear that, this again gets into sort of this, this mindset of like, you know, we need to make them pay, you know. I mean, if we're interested in cleaning up sites, should it matter where the money comes from to, to clean the site up? I guess that's the question. Do we, do we really want the community benefits program to be a benefit to the community on the one side, and something punitive to the developer on the other side? I'm not exactly sure why, or where, or how, you know, that, that comes from, but...
Without remediation of toxic contamination, there will be no project, right? So this has to be resolved before there's even any furtherance of an application.
Right. And if, I guess my point is, if someone came in and said, hey, I just got this great EPA grant, and I'm cleaning this entire site, we're going to benefit this community for here until eternity by me cleaning up this site, but I'm not paying a dime myself, would we say to that person, sorry, you have to use another community benefit?
But Dan's right. You, you couldn't build a project if there were toxic chemicals there. So, and remediation gets more and more expensive as you get it cleaner and cleaner. So I don't think you'd get a lot for this. It's...
Well, and it's grossly lacking in any kind of boundaries, you know?
Sure, it's not...
Above cost compensated. A nickel above, or...
Yeah. Okay. All right. And then, while I have you all, and I don't think we have to make a decision about this, but it was something I kept running into when I was going through my list, is, you know, there was an earlier version of this that had points that were a very wide range of points, and then we tried to simplify it by making it one, two, and three. But even in sort of the simplified world, I'm feeling like it's hard to say something is three times as valuable, or two times as valuable as something else. And so, you know, a potential thing is just to have everything worth one point, and then say, you need four points, you need five points, you need six points, and just sort of really simplify it that way. I don't know if other people are interested in that idea, but it would save us probably some time next time, when we're all fighting about whether something is three points or two points. But just, it's just an idea I've been having, because I, I was sitting here thinking, okay, that's not three points, that's really two points. And then I was like, okay, is that really the best use of our time to, to go through all that? So just a flag for everyone.
I, I think if we both simplified the list, as was suggested earlier, and took your suggestion to heart, we'd have a much better community benefits program.
You know, it's challenging. I know that we don't want to look specifically at the cost to the developer for these projects, but if they're all going to be worth one point, for example, it feels like there has to be some kind of balance between, you know, the impact to the developer of all of them.
I think we should definitely keep the part of it that says you need benefits from, like, these different categories, so that it's not all always one category. But, but I think, and I'm hoping that that could address some of that concern, that it's like, it's still spread out over a range of things. But, yeah.
Yeah. In the next staff report, I'll, I'll bring back a proposal for how that might work. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think that we were whittling away at the, you know, at the, at the cost issue that, and to try and extract back from the cost to make sure that developers were paying a certain amount, we kind of went into a priorities based that was kind of like an abstraction from that. And I think it makes more sense to, to flatten it even further and make it just, you know, as you suggest, maybe the number of points you need are the total number of stories you're building, or something like that.
Any other thoughts on this? I don't want to be the only one. Yeah.
No, I appreciate the suggestion. I think the kind of non-hierarchical simplification of it would, would simplify things. And I think it would also allow us to kind of put intention into each one, that they, that they all become equal in our ranking process.
Great.
I sure like the one-point-per-story idea, too.
That, really simple, you know? Comes to us with seven points, and you get seven stories. It's a... Okay. Anything else we want to flag before our hopefully super-productive meeting, where we really whittle this down and get to a final community benefits program?
Well, we really do need to just make final decisions. We're all in agreement on that, right? No more yellows and grays.
Yeah. And I, and I think using the, what are we calling it? The system, the rubric, the formula that we used a couple of years ago when we were going through the general plan, will be really, really helpful.
One more question. Number 19, that's gray there, is that out of consideration because the city didn't want to take care of public space? Is that true?
Yeah, that's correct. We structured this so that the ongoing maintenance cost associated with the public open space is on the development, not on the city. The city is already overburdened with public space and maintenance thereof. And so the more that we dedicate it to the city, the more we have to maintain and address. So that, that's, staff is recommending we remove that from consideration.
If, if we took the words "to city" out, would it be okay?
Who would they dedicate it to, I guess, is the question, though?
Or not?
So I think we have another one in there that's about the, you know, privately-owned public.
Yeah, like, we do, but it's...
Yeah, the concept is that you want open space, but you want to create open space that it's on public, private property that the public can enjoy. That's part of the trade-off here. There's, there's not a lot of, at least in the Gateway in particular, there's not a lot of land that, you know, you can create new parks or that sort of thing, because the city doesn't own land out there. And the idea is that, you know, we just made the land that much more expensive by doing this plan. And so we don't want to buy a piece of property at a higher rate to, than we could have otherwise, to create a park that we can't maintain. Instead, we have them create the parks, the open spaces, the little, you know, plazas, the pocket...
I think we, I think we put a plaza in the plan.
We did, yeah, yeah.
Is there an example of a private public space in the city now that we can reflect on?
I, I can't think of one. I mean, I, I feel like the, the Creamery building itself has as close of a feel to a publicly accessible private open space. You know, kind of the, work that's adjacent to the trail, that's probably on the, their property, is, is probably a good example of that. But I can think of many examples in other jurisdictions that I've been to in, you know, all across the West, where the, the project itself has a lot of retail, and they have huge plazas that are just open. There's, you know, buskers out there. There's, you know, people, you know, having their, their meals that they just bought at the, you know, the, the businesses. There's people walking around. There's cool, interesting art. You know, and I think that going in that direction is, is, you know, a good idea for us. Because those businesses benefit from having that space. That's a draw. It's a place that they created. But we all benefit, because we can go there and enjoy it.
David, what about the, the area near James Creek that is just south of, what am I thinking of? James Road? Isn't that public space that's part of that development there? It's got a bridge across the creek.
Yeah, and the Urock Indian Housing Authority project. I mean, I, yes, I guess, sort of.
Does the city own any of that?
No. There's, it's, it's all on the Urock Indian Housing Authority's land. The bridge is on city property, and, and the city owns the bridge. But the, the park space that's in that development is, technically, it's for that development. Would they kick anybody out if they came from across the street and wanted to play? Probably not. But I don't think there's an official easement or anything like that, or dedication.
Okay. Well, with that, thank you for the great discussion. I think we all have homework, so that's something to look forward to. David put it in my script here. But I'm, I'm not going to be at our next meeting. I'm going to be at a conference in San Francisco. And so if it's all right with folks, I'd love to schedule this sort of conversation for two meetings from now. But open to hearing other folks' thoughts on that.
Yeah, so that would be the Tuesday, April 8th meeting, as the next opportunity for everyone to be here.
And that gives us two meetings to do the homework of writing our pitches on what, what items to keep and what items to reject.
Does that mean the next meeting is canceled?
No, I believe we have a permit that was supposed to be on the 25th. Actually, I think that got moved. Probably not. I think we'll have some, some material for next meeting. Yeah.
I'm fine with either of those, so April 8th is fine. It'd be nice to have you here.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Okay. Well, with that, I'm going to conclude this item. And that concludes our business items. And so we can move on to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from the planning commission? Any from staff? Nope. So that, there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned.